Livestream is on.
Thank you. I'd like to call the council meeting to order. Do I have anyone that has any special intentions today? Okay, seeing none.
Council President, yes, I'd like to just take a moment to what we commemorate on Monday to remember those who have kept us safe and protected our country and our people. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Councilman Segura.
Yeah, I have a special intention for a longtime family friend and a Kenner resident, Mr. Eddie Roth. Everybody in the older days will know him as the founder and drummer of the Joker's Band. He passed away from cancer the other day and he's going to be deeply missed by his family because he was very active in his family and community. So want to wish his family the best prayers.
Anyone else?
I too have a special intention. I don't know if you recall last meeting, I got a little choked up about a couple of folks who were either stricken or passed away with COVID. And one in particular that I mentioned at the last meeting, Kevin Kenter, he was on the ventilator at that time and the next day he passed away. So please keep the family and your prayers, Teresa and children, good folks and residents of Kenner. So, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other special intentions? Okay, Councilman McKenney, Councilmember McKenney, could you lead us in prayer?
Yes, thank you. Lord, thank you for this day and the opportunity to come together to make decisions for our community and work together for the best of Kenner. On this day, please give us direction, fortitude, and grace to deal with anything that may lay ahead. May we seek your guidance and work steadfastly in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember McKenney. Councilmember Wilmot, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice just as far off.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilmot. There's one comment that I need to make before the meeting gets moving. On the Zoom group chat, there's a message up and we're asking everyone to please abide by the rules of the Zoom group chat verbiage. Natalie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Under the, do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor?
Seeing none. Under the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes. The regular council meeting has made 2020. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. We have none. Item four is correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Item four A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Mayor Zahn?
Thank you, Council President. If you give me a little bit, I do have a few things to go over that are going on throughout the city. First, I want to talk about some questions that have popped up at the last council meeting and also on social media. The boat launch, something that is affecting each and every resident, but particularly the offices of Councilman Hayes's office and my office. I'm sure they at large just get this question too. We are working with Louisiana Office Management Department for permitting. We said that last time. Of course, we've had some setbacks. If I say COVID, we'll give, it'll be the excuse that everybody likes to say that we want to blame everything on COVID. But COVID did slow down the permitting getting from the state. So added to that has been the, it's been delayed a little bit also because of the spillway being, I say, threatened to be opened. Because if the spillway opens up, that keeps bringing the silt into the boat launch, which creates a problem for our residents. What the good news is, and that we have to look forward to, is that at a recent mask giveaway, Councilman Pastada walked up to me from Justin Parish and said, "Good news is we have the $2.5 million that has come in for the breakwater." Why is the breakwater important? And why is Gomez of funding for this project important? Because the breakwater will stop. It doesn't matter when the state or whoever wants to open up that spillway again. It does not make a difference because when that breakwater gets built, it will stop the sediment, the silt, from entering into our boat launch. That is fantastic news. I want to thank Dominic, I want to thank our at-larges in the parish council and all the parish council for taking care of the city of Kenner on this, working with the parish president, also Cynthia Lee Shane, and also Councilman Hayes. I want to thank you because you've been patient. I know you get a lot of calls like I do. When these things pop up throughout the districts, it pops up in my office too. I know Glenn gets hit with it. I know George, you get hit with it by some people that live in your district. Look, I get it. All the residents are upset. The good news is future Gomez money will help rebuild the boat launch, some ramps, the docks, the decks out there, everything that we have, which we can use to get this done. So I appreciate the patience of all the constituents. I appreciate the patience of our Councilman Hayes's office and our two at-larges here also. All of us working together. And I want to thank Chad Pittfield for staying on top of this because it does fall into recreation and it's important to mention that he has been very, very instrumental in helping work with this with Councilman Pastada's office and also our offices. Another thing that affects Councilman Hayes, Councilman Segura, and Councilman Brannigan is the Dunkin' Canal project, which has become basically an issue. It's a 50-50 split between us and the state. However, the state has the most stroke over this. It comes out of the 2020 plan from a former mayor, a former city council that we are happy to have. I've said that numerous times. We are happy to have this Dunkin' Canal project and the rebuilding of that bridge and the beautification. The problem has been originally, again, and I have to say it, I know some people have fun with this, but COVID affected the workers on the project. What led to that after, and we are working very, very closely with Chardonnay Village. Councilman Brannigan is probably affected the most, even though every district is using that throughway. Councilman Brannigan and myself are affected the most on this with dealing with and answering the questions of Chardonnay Village. We will be meeting with them sometime next week. George and I have already tried to contact them. We're trying to set that up sometime next week. But the problem comes right now, and this has been popping up. The contractor wants $3 million more for the project. He has contacted the state, has told them he cannot do it unless he gets $3 million more. He's asked for a change order. The state has stepped up and said no to the change order. They've also ordered the contractor back to work. We 100% support the state on what they're demanding. It's simple. Get back to work. You bid it for that $3 million. We don't have 1.5 and neither does the state to put into this project. The city supports the state. We do not support the contractor. We support our constituents. We support our residents. This is an issue that is part of the state's 50%, but it's 100% our issue here in the city of Kenner. So if anybody thinks that we are asleep at the wheel with this, we are not. We are absolutely on top of this and we are not happy with what's going on. But remember, the state is demanding what needs to be done and we are supporting that 100%. So sales tax is next. March's numbers are in. We are 20% down compared to this time last year. This is for the last half of March, which was affected by COVID. And we all know that our sales tax were affected by COVID. We predict a 50% drop in sales tax for April. We predict another 40% drop, and this is all predictions, for May. That is going to affect each and every department of the city of Kenner. Of course, we take care of our departments. Our CEO, Deborah Foshee, and Deputy CEO Lee Rosell have met with, and our CFO have met with all of our departments. I personally met with Chief Glazer, with Deborah, Councilman Brannigan was there as the council president, and also his staff. It affects the police department too, just like it affects every other department. I appreciate Chief Glazer working with us with this. We don't want to, you know, take away from any department, and we're not. We're just asking every department to make as many cutbacks as we can. Therefore, we will be asking the council, and you have something that's popping up today on non-A. We'll be asking the council over the next, this council meeting and next council meeting, to take that into consideration. We will have to adopt last year's budget. Because some people may be asking, what's going on with the budget? We will have to ask the council to adopt last year's budget. Each council person knows, we've spoken to you about that, that that's what we're going to have to do. We will probably have a lot of budget amendments from anytime after, you have to, by law, by charter, you have to accept it, as you all know, by June 16. So we are asking you to accept last year's budget and adopt last year's budget. And we will probably be making a lot of change, amendments, budget amendments, after that and into the fall. That's the only way we can get through this and make sure that the city stays whole. And I do believe we will get through it. I believe things will pick up. As you go around the city of Kenner, you see businesses doing a little bit better. The tent operation that we have done has definitely worked for these businesses. I know a lot of you all have used it. I've used it quite often. My staff has used it eating outside. So the Russians seem to be very happy. Most of the Russians say that they up. You see it going on in New Orleans. You see it going on in Justin Parish, and they're very happy with it too. The next thing I want to talk about is obviously a very popular topic out there is garbage. So we're going to switch over and you're going to see a few slides that we want to share with you all to tell you where we are and where we've been, where we are, and where we're going by probably tomorrow afternoon with Good Weather Committee. Adam, can you put those slides on?
I'm starting it up right now.
So about 10 days ago, we started picking up Romelli cans throughout the city of Kenner. As you see, this is how we started picking them up with many, many types of vehicles throughout the city. First, it was done with a contractor we hired. I'll wait for the next slide. First, it was done by a contractor we hired. Then we moved, then we had a one volunteer pop up, which I want to thank Councilman Brennan for giving me his contact information and passing it on to Chair Pittfield. One volunteer stepped up. That led to us saying, we need more help. We put our city workers on the street picking up garbage cans also. That then led to more volunteers. And we know that there's a group of volunteers that have come out that have been organized, and then there's also individuals that are doing it. So there's too many names to think. I don't want to go through all that, but you know who you are. And I thank the volunteers, I thank the city workers, and I thank, well, the contractor also for making sure that this gets done. Most importantly, the person who has managed this logistically every day, besides doing his other duties that he has from COVID and also running recreation, has been our Director of Recreation, Chad Pittfield. Each council person knows that because you've probably called Chad Pittfield to say, hey, this is a problem area, need to get to it. And he has done that. Next slide. So as we pick up the cans, or as the groups pick up the cans, I'm just going to use we, as we pick up the cans, they go to the public works lot. This is how they come in, by the trailer, by the trucks, the trailers, whatever it's being picked up with, and they're dropped off in the public works lot. This is what they look like when they arrive, which is the next slide. This is what they look like when they arrive to the yard. They're all like that. And sometimes if the lids closed, that means it probably has garbage in it. If the lids open, it was an empty can. The next slide.
Sorry, Mayor, there's a little bit of a lag.
That's fine. City workers. What's that? I thought somebody said something. Sorry. Only city workers sort and stack them. So what I'm talking about is the cans that have garbage in it. Those are put off to the side. The cans that are empty get stacked, but it's sorted and stacked by city workers. Next slide. I guess the most amazing part is this slide, besides everything else everybody else is doing, my city workers, Chad, and the contractor. But this slide right here is probably the most amazing because each and every can you see stacked here or piled up was brought in by citizens who have stepped up to the plate and said, where can I drop off my cans? Again, you know who you are. I appreciate you doing, instead of saying, when am I going to get picked up? And we're coming. These are people that are saying, where can I bring it to? This is very impressive. And I think each and every one of us need to remember, this is cities, citizens of the city of Kenner that are stepping up to the plate and doing this. This is pretty impressive. So I thank them, besides everyone else, for doing what they're doing. Next slide, Al.
Got you.
Without the interruption. We will, we will continue to pick up the cans. We have picked up a good bit. And I'm going to tell you in a minute where we picked up at. But as we continue to pick up the cans, we started these signs posted, playgrounds, public, you know, right of ways, intersections to let people know what to do. Because of course, we put a lot of stuff in PSAs and on Facebook, social media, but not everybody has that. So we understand that. So Chad came up with the idea of doing these signs, putting them up throughout the city. We're going to leave these up for a while because even though we've probably at about 90% of the city right now picked up, we still will have a few stragglers. We have a rough count of 22,700. That's very rough. So we still will have a few extra that are out there. Some individuals want to keep their can. You really can't keep your Romelli can because if you keep your Romelli can, you put garbage in it, IV can still not touch it. So we're going to leave these signs up, still try to collect those cans. And the next slide will show where we are. Before you put that slide up though, Adam, today being Friday, you can show those. But today being Friday, we started in Lincoln Manor, and they are now going to parts of University City, Duke Clemson area, just that that western part of University City. So that will be finished today. Tomorrow, they will be in Susan Park in my neighborhood, Beachview. So we have three subdivisions left in the city, well, two subdivisions, oh, a portion of one subdivision. So there's a portion of District Five to be done, and there's two subdivisions in District One and District Three to be done. And the map is going to show you where, how it looks when you look at it. And look, this map started off really, really scary about 10 days ago. Go ahead and put it up, Adam. So if you look at the pink, the pink is the private citizens. All the pink area was done by the private cities, citizens. That's pretty impressive. And they've done a good bit. They actually grew both and started in Grand Lake, and it's spread out. What we tried to do, what Chad tried to do was start in the west and the east, and also start in the south and work up. So if you see, the middle part of Kenner, besides Beachview, is still left. The orange is done by the contractor, and the city workers is the green guys. So our city workers that are out there doing recreation work, general services, parkways, and public works have done garbage work. And if you just look at that green, I gotta, look, an applaud to the city of Kenner workers, besides every other group that has done the majority of this work. And I don't know who's out there today. I know city workers out there. Maybe, maybe the citizens are coming back out this evening and tomorrow. They have done a fantastic job too. But look at that green, what's been done by the city of Kenner, employees that are not used to picking up garbage. I, I think we're at a point where with good weather, by tomorrow evening, this will be done. I'm not going to say every Romelli can will be out the street, but the residents will have their garbage can out the street. If there's a garbage can that stayed behind a fence, if there's a garbage can that's been outside of the house that was maybe not accessible, those have not been grabbed. Maybe someone did not put their garbage can on the curb like we requested it. And I understand that I'm not blaming them, but we're going to have to do another sweep starting Monday, not Monday, starting, Monday's a holiday, starting Tuesday to get those garbage cans, the rest of the remainder of the cans out of the city of Kenner. They're all being brought to the lot. The next step will be, obviously, next week, the side sweep, doing that final sweep, will be also us making sure that the cans are getting onto containers that are dropped off by Romelli Waste. We're loading those up. We're getting those. He's coming to pick them up. Romelli Waste's picking them up, and they're taking them to another location. That could be a little lengthy. We don't know how that's going to work because we're at the mercy of Romelli Waste picking them up. I want to apologize that the citizens of Kenner have had to endure what they've endured. And look, we all, we've all looked at Facebook, we've all looked at social media, social media, I'm sorry. We've all heard it in the street. That is an apology from me as the mayor of the city of Kenner, that you've had to put up with it. But it's all staying together to get this done is the most important part. We have one more piece of this puzzle, which we'll have to visit in two weeks. That'll be a very important piece of this puzzle. If looking back, maybe we should have taken a little more time to explore what could pop up. So that is something that we need to look at in the future. I recognize that. But at this point, we are moving forward in the right direction. Again, my apologies to the citizens of the city of Kenner that you've had to endure, which you've had to endure. But I guarantee you with some announcements that we'll make next week on what Ivy Waste has done. As this is being done, getting this garbage, this litter, this litter left by Romelli on our streets, off of our streets, out of your, out of the front of your yard. As we're, as that's been done, we've been working on some announcements for Ivy Waste to make next week and over the course of the following week of things that have been invested into the city of Kenner, which I think the residents will be happy with. A month into the future, I feel like we're all going to be very, very happy with the direction that this is going in. Again, it is unfortunate this has happened the way it's happened, and we need to look at this a better way next time to make sure it does not happen. With that said, if y'all have any questions on this before I do the next presentation that I'm going to do, I'm not going to do. But if you have any questions on Dunkin' Canal, sales tax, or what was the other thing, boat launch or garbage, I'm here to ask any questions, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor Zahn. Does anyone have any questions? I can't, okay. Councilmember Segura?
Mayor, I know you've touched on it briefly, but since some cans were not put on the curb and were not picked up, whether they didn't put them out or they think they keep them. Is there going to be a, and I know you said Chad will make a second run, but is there, if anybody has a can that wasn't picked up, should they call his office, get to him or whatever so that they can?
Yeah, I think, I think the easiest thing to do, Councilman, is to, we continue to take those calls in. And if y'all could just text Chad, because if you text Chad the address, I could tell you this. He, he has like a, like an extra crew, not an extra crew, but like a, I call it like a hot shot delivery, a hot shot pickup crew that he sends out to pick those up. And y'all have all experienced that because y'all either sent them to me or you've sent them to Chad. Continue that process if you can. You get a call from your constituent, send it directly to Chad and myself. You want to do a two-way text, three-way text with me and Chad so that we can keep track of it. Chad has a system. He gets it like that. He sends it in and it gets picked up within a day or so.
All right, thank you. Because like I said, we're going to undoubtedly get a comment from someone saying, well, hey, I, mine didn't get picked up. What do I do?
Absolutely. Good question. Thank you.
And Councilmember Carol?
I think Mike's got one more question, George.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to follow up with the, the green recycling bins that, that are out on the street and some were picked up and what's happening with that.
So, so those are the property of the city of Kenner. Those do not belong, those do not belong to Romelli Waste. We're not, there's been some errors that we've picked up some of those containers. We don't really want those containers back. But I would ask the citizens not to use those. If you're going to go, look, Councilman Hayes has been very adamant since day one dealing with recycling last year. I want a, I want a recycling bin on wheels with a cover. I've got to say, that was a very good idea. So I'm asking the citizens to register with Ivy Waste, get your black can with IV on it, the smaller version, with the lid, with the wheels. Go to that because what happens is with those green containers, as we all know, the wind hits them and they blow all over the place. So if you go to the IV website, register for your cart, please get that. Start using that. Use the green container while you have to, if you, if you're, if you're need to do that. But those containers you can keep and eventually phase it out. And we do have a few we picked up, and that's not, that's not what we wanted to do. But look, it, no fault of anybody. It's a lot to pick up, and I think they just see them and they pull them. And sometimes the contractor's picking them up too. So, you know, we don't know who's working for the contractor. I mean, it's, they're just grabbing something that sees, that's not IV.
And again, getting back to the Duncan Bridge, which does affect a lot of the city, the way people traverse back and forth. As you're saying, the work has stopped, we know because COVID, but the contractor is, is not at this point saying he's coming back to work anytime soon because he wants.
He's been, correct. He said he does not want to return to work, and he's been ordered back by the state. And within the next two weeks, I'm sure I will have an answer for this council. If I don't have it, if I have it before then, I'll put something out on social media.
Well, okay, and I'm sure, and I know we talked on it earlier, but if he doesn't return to work, we have all of the means to go after, like performance bonds and whatever.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That's, I just didn't want to discuss that today because I'm hoping it doesn't come to that. Within the next week, we should know something. Before the next council meeting, I'll have a report.
Okay, well, we do have the protection to get the work done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carol?
Thank you, Mr. President, and hello to everyone. I like to first thank the volunteers and the city workers, everybody that's, that has taken part in picking up this garbage and trash that have littered our streets for the past two or three weeks. It has been a long process. Obviously, a lot of have been upset about this. And that is our priority right now, to be able to pick up this trash, to avoid any other safety hazards along with what we already are dealing with, with this pandemic. So I'd like to say thank you for that. Most of my conversations have been with the General Services Assistant Director and Foshee as it relates to information, scheduling, and all that. As the map showed, District One, the Lincoln Manor subdivision, the Lee Sand, Menden subdivision, the Veteran Heights, and Susan Park are the only one that's left. So we've been dealing with this longer than, than most people and are still dealing with this. Hopefully, I pray that the weather is well, and I hope that the mayor's schedule that he has in place and believe will be completed this week. So I can inform the citizens that by Sunday, this will be picked up. You know, I don't like to give people false hope. I like to be straight with them. But this is the plan to ensure that all of this trash is picked up, that they don't have any, any more issues with stuff. They've been there for three weeks. I do agree with the Recreation Director about leaving those signs up because it has been, I guess, part of the, part of the challenges for people to getting the information about that. So yes, please leave those signs up. I will also be asking people to text, email, Facebook, my office and my assistants when we have this second pass so I can get that information to be able to pass it out to the people, particularly in South Kenner, where the garbage can has, have been picked up as of, as of today or yesterday. So all of those things that we are doing, to be able to get a strong definite about the garbage being picked up by Sunday is something that will be my, my answer when people ask me as it relates to Lee Sand, Menden, Veteran Heights, Susan Park about that. So that is a priority to me, to first get that out. And again, thank all, everyone for their support. And I will continue my conversation with Mr. Pittfield, the General Services Director, and the mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Carol.
Council, Council President.
Mayor Zahn?
Yeah, let me just correct. Councilman Carol, Lincoln Manor is picked up as this morning. So if we take, so we take from the St. Charles Parish line of District One, okay? Veterans Boulevard, if you go across all the way to where Susan Park starts, that is the only, according to the map, that is, and if the map could go back up, that'd be helpful. That is the only area that's left in District One. And just for the record, District Five has a portion still left. And also my neighborhood still had, look, my Romelli can is still in front of my house. So Beachview is still left. It's the way it worked, and that's what I was saying before. They started They started west and east and moved in. So if you see everything in District One to the bottom and to the east and to the west has been done. They've moved in slowly and they trying to grab that middle area, which, I mean, look, Beachview got left out of it, but that middle area where University City is, Clemson Duke area coming down into Susan Park, not Susan Park, it's probably Menden, Veteran, Veteran Heights, coming in and squeezing into that. When I say by Sunday, again, I need to repeat, with the weather we have right now. It could be hot, but it can't be raining. So, if it's, I don't know if there's weather coming this evening, it's up and down with the weather reports. Or tomorrow, that will throw us off until the early part of next week. I'm hoping today stays like it is. They knocked out Lincoln Manor alone this morning is my understanding. If they keep on with that, you're going to see, and I will send you, Councilman Carol, um, by this evening, what the rest of District One and the city of Kenner look like as they move it in. I know, I think I talked to him earlier, Chad, I know I talked to him earlier, but I think he said that Beachview is one of them tomorrow morning and they should be finishing up the District Five portion this afternoon. So, anything else left is squeezing in into that middle central area of Kenner, just for clarification.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, thanks for that clarification and also thank, uh, on behalf of the citizens of Lincoln Manor that the garbage is picked up. And obviously, when, when I mentioned District One, it's just out of respect for the other councilmen, I don't mention their area, but it is just for all the people in the city of Kenner. And just for clarification, for a lot of us, that we interchangeably use Veteran Heights and Susan Park. So those are two separate subdivisions.
Right.
Is Susan Park, which is older, but Veteran Heights. So for the people who are listening from Veteran Heights, uh, it's Veteran Heights and Susan Park. Both that has to be picked up. Menden area, so just for clarity, I wanted to make sure that uh, particularly the, the people in Susan Park who've been there a whole lot, that, not just Susan Park, but it will be Veteran Heights too. So thank you.
No problem, no problem. Thank, thank you. Thanks for your cooperation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Gregory, I lived in Susan Park when I was five years old, so yeah, I know it's old.
I wasn't going to mention that, Michael, but
but I, I helped you out.
That was eighty-four years ago. I would like to thank Chad Pittfield for doing a great job for us. You're, you're definitely worth your weight in gold and, uh, you're a worker and, uh, I can relate to that. Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one else, um, motion by Councilmember McKenna, second by Council?
I'm sorry, Council, Council President, I apologize.
What you got?
My, my part's complete, but I do want to ask Heidi Glorioso to be, um, to come, not come up. But talk, Main Street Man should talk about a, um, a Main Street program that's going on.
I just wanted to announce a new marketing campaign that the Louisiana Main Street Program started this week. It's called Our Lights Are On Downtown. So Rivertown is one of thirty-six Main Street communities in the state, so we'll be participating in this campaign. And basically Rivertown businesses are encouraged to leave a light on or, uh, dress up a, a lighted window display for the next month to symbolize that our district is open and that we're ready to welcome back visitors. We're lucky in Rivertown also to have the clear Christmas lights that still drape across Williams Boulevard. And we also have the bistro lights in the Rivertown Arts Council courtyard. So we have all that lit up as well right now, just to kind of contribute to the theme that we're lighting up our district. Outside of the businesses, everyone else is just encouraged to share information about the campaign. Make posts on social media with Facebook and Twitter, um, just kind of get the word out. And we're encouraged to always share those posts with the Louisiana Office of Tourism and also the Lieutenant Governor's Office. They'll repost our posts and just share it with their network and it just gets it out to a lot more followers. So we're just trying to get the word out that we're back open, ready for business and we just need to support our, our local small businesses in Rivertown. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Uh, Councilman Member Carol?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Glorioso, thank you for that information, I really appreciate that. Thank you for our communication that we always, always, always have for anything that moves in, in South Kenner. Now we're talking about the Main Street Program again. And I think, uh, for us to be able to, to put this information out, uh, to all the businesses is great. What, what, what is that date again for when we're asking people to turn their lights on, businesses to turn their light?
It could start immediately, um, I've already sent it out to Bob Ross, so he's going to do a city of Kenner Facebook post. I have it posted on the Rivertown website page as well, so we're starting right away.
Is it, is it a duration for one week, two weeks?
To do it for about a month, but it can go on for as long as we, we want to do it.
Since it's going to be a month, I would ask if, if you and I, along with the Ms., Ms. Claus, that's what I always call her from that department. To me, along with Seventy-Six to do a, a commercial, or sort, you can put on Seventy-Six. Uh, and also I would like to send out a letter from my office to all the businesses in District One. That way, everybody going to, everybody's going to get it for the people that miss or not social media, you know, people themselves. So if I can after get that information from you with some of the details. Maybe if you have the address for the businesses, if not, the planning department should have that. So I can get Kelly to be able to send those letters out next week to everyone and ask them for their participation. But for the, for the, uh, video for the commercial, definitely would like you to link. And anyone else that want to participate, not just you guys, but it's open to, to everyone, all the, the mayor and everybody. I, I think it shows you, we do this and it shows that we are one of thirty-six, but we want to be number one of thirty-six. And to be able to get as many funds as we can, to be able to make our program in, in the South Kenner area, Rivertown area. So thanks again for all your support, uh, you and all your department that you work, work in and I look forward to, uh, to opening up again for Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
President.
Okay.
George, I just, George, I have a, just a quick question for Heidi, for Ms. Glorioso. Hi, thank you, I appreciate you sharing that information with you, us. I just had a question about, um, Rivertown, are all of the businesses or are the vast majority of the businesses back open at this point?
Along Williams are doing well with the curbside pickup for the two shops like Tin Roof and Sullivan's General Store. Fortune Patio is open Friday and Saturdays now and they're still doing outdoor seating. I went down there Tuesday night to try to take some pictures of things lit up, Jan Deuces was open. Florida Lily was not, but I think that might have been their normal day to be closed. Um, and La Bella, as I know, is also doing outdoor seating on their patio area, um, for food service. So, yeah, it's starting to get back up and running.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
And I can recommend the shrimp pool boy at Fortune Patio, I had one yesterday, they are incredible. Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one else, uh, motion by Councilmember McKenna, second by Councilmember Wilmot on the consent agenda. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings for final passage. Item nine A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven oh eight. An ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty operating budget to reallocate two million seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-five thousand eighty-four cents from various accounts to the general municipal sweep account due to COVID nineteen.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Hayes to open a public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Like to have, uh, uh, the Finance Director, Mike Wetzel, speak on this, uh, this sweep.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Ms. Foshee would like to speak.
Okay.
I apologize, I can't seem to find the blue hand I'm supposed to raise. I'd like to, I'd like to introduce this topic if I could and then Mike Wetzel, I feel confident will have some answers that he can fill in. But as this council well knows, uh, we have projected for this fiscal year, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year, we have projected a seven point eight million dollars shortfall to the city's budget. Based on the fact that we have a slightly north of seventy million dollar budget, that's projecting a ten percent shortfall between now and the end of June. We've previously discussed some of the steps that we have taken, we implemented a hiring freeze. We require that all purchases be only for amounts that will be used between now and the end of the year. And Mike went about the business, uh, of meeting with every single department and going through every single budget to try to find what we could to plug this year's hole. This is separate and apart from next year, this is separate and apart from the two thousand, uh, twenty, twenty-one projected future budget. We are simply looking at ways to get through this year and get to the end of this year. So this is the first step and what this is, is a sweep of funds from one account to the other. We are not amending the budget to change the revenues, we're not amending the budget to change the expenditures. The first step is simply, basically what would be a line item transfer, but because it's between departments as opposed to within a department, we require the council's approval. The next step, which will then be the next, uh, council agenda, I think, or the, yeah, I think it's the next council agenda. That will, that will include the actual budget amendment. The budget from twenty, from nineteen twenty will be amended to reflect more accurate projected collections and more accurate projected expenditures. So how does this impact next year? Um, again, as the council knows, on May first, we submitted to them a letter which detailed this and provided that because we do not yet have the financial information that we need to project into the, into the coming year, we're taking advantage of the automatic adoption of the prior year's budget. This does not mean that we're going to go through the year twenty twenty-one and follow the prior year's budget. What this means is that on May first, when we hit our deadline to submitting a budget, the budget we submitted was last year's budget. As we go forward and get better numbers, you heard from the mayor that we at least know our March numbers are down twenty percent. As we go forward and get better numbers, we'll be able to make more accurate projections for you and we'll be coming back to the council with budget amendments for twenty twenty-one. But what this thing is before you is a budget amendment, line item change for the year nineteen twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Foshee. Councilmember Wilmot? You, you're muted, Tom.
I got it, thank you. Deborah, I don't know if this is for you or, or for Mike, um, there's, there's seven items that are listed. And, and there are, that are over a hundred thousand. Could, could, could we elaborate just what those are on here? It's like on page one, uh, it shows like three of them and on page four, the last four things, uh, are, are over a hundred thousand as well. So we can understand where they're coming from?
You're right, that is for Mike.
Okay.
Mike?
I'm trying to find what you're talking about, Councilman, what page?
It's the first page, it's probably about the tenth, one down.
Forty thousand?
The numbers that are over a hundred thousand, the bigger numbers.
So that's just basically multiple, that is, so we defunded sixty, one, but we, we swept sixty-eight open positions. These are just multiple positions within that department, not necessarily just one position.
Well, all right, with the first, the first three I'm referring to, there are over a hundred thousand, those are referring to salaries, correct? It's multiple salaries, is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, so that, that, that takes care of those four. And on the very last page, we're looking again at salaries and I guess it's going to be, uh, the last four items. Those, those are bunched up, I guess, as well, it's got salaries, uh, then it's got non-fire overtime, health insurance and accrued leave. All those items are over a hundred thousand, could you elaborate a little bit, just, just?
Yeah, so that's, uh, same thing, so the health insurance is just, um, from not having to fund the, uh, not having these employees here. So it's a, of that, um, salaries, that is our, um, you have health insurance, you have accrued leave, accrued leave is for when people leave the city, pay them out their, uh, their sick leave, their vacation time. That is that money's. And non-fire overtime is, that's what it says. So it's, it's all of the city workers over to, you know, text. I ask the departments themselves to try to cover whatever overtime they have. And if they cover it, that's where I'd pull that money from. So it's basically just extra money that is sitting there, not going to be utilized.
Perfect, okay, that's, that's what I wanted to understand, thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys. Look, um, when, if someone wants to speak, I would appreciate if you would just put your hand up so that I can address you. I cannot see everybody's name on the side of my screen. So if you click the little, uh, uh, button, uh, to, uh, to, to be recognized, I can't see that. Okay, uh, is there anyone wishing to address the council on this? Adam, do we have anybody in queue?
We have some people with their hands up.
Okay.
Ms. Salina is first.
Okay.
I'm trying to unmute her now.
Okay.
Hello?
Sally, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, my question is, uh, directed at the councilmen's bringing forth this ordinance. In light of the need for this ordinance, acknowledgement of the additional expenses, revenue shortfall and losses, um, can, who can provide an itemized, an itemized list of the additional expenses and losses? And the second part of my question is, in light of this financial hit that Kenner has had, would you or would you not support the city of Kenner moving to the mall?
Well, the list, the list of expenses are listed in the agenda and, uh, moving to the mall is really not on the table right now.
Okay.
Yep, Ms. Foshee?
If I could, thank you Sally for the question or the questions, I can, I can address the first part. What you see in the, uh, agenda before you, the item before you is simply the, the surpluses that we can dig. Basically, we did the sort of, uh, Mike Wetzel basically dug all the quarters out of the couch cushions he could find through every single department and we're trying to aggregate that. So that is, that is really the funds that we have to expend on these additional expenses. I think your question may be going to, what are our additional expenses? We're in the process, I can tell you what some of them are, but they're not itemized yet as we're putting them together to both apply for the CARES funding through the state and then from FEMA funding or GOCEF FEMA funding through the federal government. So a big item that we have, uh, in terms of the expense is, is employee overtime. Um, it's also PPE, the volume of PPE that we've needed to acquire both for our own staff and then now that we're reopening for the public. It was very expensive in the beginning because it was super hard to come by. So we were spending a lot of money, particularly on masks, uh, we spent a lot of money on decon. And then we had to develop a more robust IT system, Sally, because we had to get basically computers to everyone's home because everybody's still working. We didn't, we didn't shut down operations, we just moved everybody remotely. Everybody went home or to some other location. So we had increased IT expenses plus those COVID-related expenses. We're not finished itemizing yet and I think we'll find some more things, but I think if that answers your question, what, what are our, what are our big expenses? That's, that's largely what they have been.
Thank you so much, Deborah, that answers perfectly.
Adam, do we have anyone else?
Nobody else has their hand up.
Okay, uh, so I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Hayes to close the public hearing. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, second by Councilmember Hayes to adopt.
I received the request to amend this item, if we could entertain an amendment right now. The legal department has requested that we change the amount from two million seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-five thousand eighty-four cents to five million six hundred and eighty-five thousand and fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents to reflect a number of deductions being made in addition to the ones that are listed into, um, the ordinance.
Councilmember Carol?
Yeah, uh, the additions, have they been identified and are we, are we, can we see those, right? I came to get a copy of those to see what they are. If, if they're not? If, if they're not on this, if there are additional ones, how do we go about seeing that?
Yes, the clerk received a copy of the amendments. I can read them into the record. It's going to take me some time, but I can read the amendments into the, to the record if you, if you'd like me to. Or I can send it.
Being that I didn't see it, I'm not sure if for everyone else, but I think just to be out there that know what we're talking about, you may, you may need to take the time to read it in to see what they are. When you say like 30 minutes to read it in or five, 10 minutes?
I'll go ahead and read them into the record, sir.
Wait, can I ask a question, Natalie? When did you receive those?
Just a few minutes ago, right, right?
Did you share it with the council?
Yes, it was sent. Okay, y'all ready?
Wait, wait, councilmember Hayes?
I have a problem with this, really. I thought we were going to do the additional $5 million at a further later date. So we'd all have the information. I don't think it's totally appropriate to read $5 million of additional without the understanding you're saying, oh, you're ready. I don't know how long this is going to take, but I'd like to see it in print before we do anything. And I think we have the time to do that, don't we?
I think, let me, let me say this. I think we need to defer it one meeting. And to y'all, I, I was under the impression that you'd received that before today. So if you just received it, let's just, I mean, Mike, do you have a, Mike Wetzel, do you have a problem with pulling it down and deferring it? Because I was under the impression they had gotten the amendment during the week.
I, I'm thinking, I mean, we can, Mayor. Just the next meeting, we're going to have the, so let me say this, the, the.
Can we do it without the amendment? Can we do it without the amendment and then come back and amend it?
You can. I mean.
Let, is the council comfortable with that? Would you, not, not amended? I don't think it should be done with the amendment. I think it should be done as is. Y'all are comfortable with that. That's been on there for two weeks. Y'all are comfortable with legislation as is. We'll come back and amend it next week. I mean, on two weeks from now.
I agree with that.
Okay, let's.
Deborah's got her hand up.
Well, I got, I got hands up all over the place. Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, council chair. Natalie, can you just, who, who put this up again? And I just want to make sure.
Administration did, and I'm, I'm under the impression y'all got it during the week. So I'd rather it not be $5 million.
And Natalie, you're saying we did receive this, just?
It, it's too, it's too late.
But no, I, I, I mean, I don't, you saying we did receive this? I don't, I don't see anything.
It was sent to the chairman and myself for review. And at the final review, the clerk is reading it into the record, but it was not sent to the entire council just yet. Sorry about.
Yeah, I'm, I, I, I think we need to defer this.
Okay.
But go ahead, please. I'm sorry. Pardon me.
That's okay. The council clerk received it last night.
Right, so what I'd like, what I'd like to do is just ask the council to accept it, what you have before you for the last two weeks, and we'll come back and amend it.
I propose we do that.
Okay.
Councilmember McKee?
Yes, I have a question. So I just want to clarify, when did we receive? I've, I've only seen this since the agenda was out since Wednesday. Is that correct? Or was this passed, was this shared before the agenda?
The amendment? The amendment?
The, the, what's on the agenda now?
We saw it since Wednesday.
That's been on, that's been on for two weeks.
Yes, it was read into summary at the previous meeting.
It was on first reading.
Okay, that's all, that's what I wanted.
That's all I'm asking for is just to, council president, if you give me a moment, I'm asking just for the legislation as is not amended to be passed. It is obviously the administration's fault that did not get to you to just before. I was under the impression the amendments, the amendment had gotten to y'all the early part of this week. So what I'm asking for is just to accept it as is. We'll come back and amend it.
Okay, councilmember Wilmot? You're muted.
Okay, I wanted to just ask, as far as the, the, the amendment's concerned, without voting on that, of course, I wanted to know what's the change from the current legislation to with the amendment? What money difference is that? Yeah, Mike, if you can help me with that?
Oh, yeah, so basically the amendment is only doing a line item change. We're not amending the city's budget right now. We're taking money, extra monies that are in one department and sweeping it through a holding account so we can then next meeting do actual city's budget amendment. I'm just taking $5 million from A and put it in B. It's still within the city, so we're not changing the budget per se.
Right, I, I, I understand that, but I still would like to know with the changes and dollar value, the current original legislation to with the amendment? If it's a $2 million change?
It's, I think it was a three, it's going to 5.7. So.
5.7.
So we're talking about $3 million?
Yeah, $3 million.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Does it matter procedurally, Mike? Does it matter if we, we wait on the amendment and cover that next meeting? Does it matter to you?
Deborah, go ahead.
Deborah?
Okay, um, so I think here's the, here's the situation. I think the intent was, and again, I'm, I apologize that you did not get this sooner. I was not aware that you did not have this. The intent was to make all of the line item changes so the money was in the right accounts. So then the next, the next amendment is to amend the budget. It's going to be a bit of a challenge to amend the budget without all the money being in the right account. That being said, guys, I think we have time probably to do it all. This is the original, the original line item change was to sweep what we knew we could sweep out of just salaries. The second one was after looking at items other than salaries and after working with the police department and, and after basically getting everybody in there, that was just the second set of line item changes. So can it be done without it? Absolutely. Is it going to be a little bit uglier piece of legislation? Sure. But I think it makes more sense than asking you guys to do a line item change without knowing what you're changing. So I, I concur. We will make it work. Bottom line.
And that, that, that was, that's my issue, where is it coming from? So we build those things at right, at, at present with the amendment. So that's, that's the confusion and the concern. So I agree that we should go forward with, with the original legislation without the amendment if it doesn't harm anything. And apparently it does not, so, um, thank you.
Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you. And it wasn't even mentioned in the agenda meeting, or correct?
The amendment, the amendment was.
Yep. Yeah, but I, I guess.
It's too, it was too late, though.
The extra money?
Thought it was all one, it was all one. Like what was on the agenda was the, the line item transfer of all the money. So I don't know that a separate discussion was had of, of.
2.7 was discussed, not the additional three.
Councilman Brennan brought up in, in, in that agenda meeting that there was an amendment and I'm pretty sure the amount was discussed. But look, it's irrelevant at this point because we're just asking for you to pass about the amendment.
Councilmembers of year?
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm trying to, everyone's got their right points. We did not specifically hear of the additional 3 million prior to this amendment. So if, as the mayor is saying, if we just move forward with what is on the agenda right now, the 2.7, and then come back now, at the next meeting, though, it's not an amendment. It's a whole new procedure, just like this public hearing. We can't amend this, we, once we vote on it.
Deborah, legal?
Well, I see Deborah's.
Right, he's ab, he's absolutely right. And if we reintroduce it, it's going to have to lay over. So my recommendation at this point is to be defer this item in its entirety. And we will get our ducks in a row, so we will be in a better position to pass this next time.
Okay, I make a motion to defer for one meeting.
I second it. Councilmember Hayes?
Again, I, I second it. Everybody needs to understand that, you know, here we're just looking at the 2.7 was health insurance, retirement, FICA, salaries. I think it's important for everybody to understand where the next three is coming from. And that's going to be travel, it's going to be stationary, it's going to be supplies. And it's, it's a full look at everything. And it's, it's, uh, doesn't make total sense to look at some of it and then pass in globo another 3 million. So I agree, let's just table this and go forward with a whole, with the whole information for everybody to see.
Uh, Mr. Rapier?
Can, can I make a suggestion? As, as the mayor has said, I would suggest that you pass, you, you, you consider the, the legislation that is, that has been read in without the amendment as, as it is. And the way that you can deal with this, it would probably help the administration is allow, allow this amendment to be read into summary, bring in it from the floor. That way it can be voted on next meeting. And then you have put in for summary, the final budget amendment next, first reading next meeting. And then everything falls in place for them to be able to vote on it at the second meeting in June.
Can I clarify what you just said, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you saying to allow this amendment in as a first reading to defer the entire item until the next meeting?
You could do that too, if you wanted to. Both of those would work.
I believe we should really defer the entire situation until the next meeting. That's a motion.
Member Wilmot?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, I mean, again, I want to make sure absolutely clear that, that, this isn't going to have any negative impact if we do any deferral on it for, for the pending 2.7 million. That's not going to have any negative impact. I don't know why we can't do that now and piecemeal it.
Tom, here's my concern. We filed and, and filed in plenty of time and it laid over the amendments of the 2.9. If we pass that now, then the amendment that we're talking about is going to have to be reintroduced. I, I think personally it's going to be safer to bump the whole thing. I understand what Ed is saying, and he's, he's, he's the right legal person to ask about the legalities of all this. I think from a housekeeping perspective, it might just be easier for us to defer the whole thing, fix the package back together, and then bring it back to you as one consolidated item.
And we'll be, we'll.
I think we'd, I think that's meeting in full without having to lay over further. Is that what you're saying?
I believe that is correct. But again, you need to ask Ed that question. He is the, he is the attorney on this topic. But if you, if you amend it here and then defer it, it will all be ripe for the next meeting.
Ed, is that correct?
Yeah, that would work also.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
All right, well then.
Councilmember Carol?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and just to, just to repeat what councilmember Haynes said, if, if we, if we defer it to the next meeting and, and give us an opportunity to read it and do it all, then does that hurt any, anything? I mean, better be safe than sorry. That way we get a chance to look at it. Unless he's going to defer it out longer, that would be the best thing to do. Other than anything else, you know, why, why can't we do that?
Okay, councilmembers of year?
Okay, as, as I appreciate, we're on the discussion for the deferral, but that's fine to have all the other discussion, I guess. But with, with what was just proposed is if we amend the additional 3 million into this and it passes and then we defer it, it then goes to the next meeting and gives that extra two weeks for us to appreciate where that numbers came from.
Yes.
If, if that's the, that's the general understanding that I see now, I don't have a problem withdrawing my motion for deferral and then make the amended and then come back and make the motion for deferral.
I agree with that.
Okay. So.
At this point, what would be pending, Natalie, confirm, please? What is pending is a motion to amend. If you, if you accept the motion to amend, then the original is amended, but then there will be a motion for thereafter.
Right, but Deborah, the motion for deferral was made and seconded, so I guess we need to withdraw that.
Can you withdraw it? You're going to have to vote it down, though. You had a second.
Okay, well, whatever that process.
I think you'd have to vote it down.
Yeah, probably so. So if everybody understands, if we vote on a deferral and vote it down, I'll reintroduce the amendment for the 3 million. And then if we pass that, I'll re-put up a deferral and then push it off to the next meeting. That's, if everybody hasn't understand that.
Okay, let's, let's do that. Okay, so.
All right, let's vote on the deferral as, as it stands right now.
So we vote that, so we have to vote that down?
Exactly, so I vote.
Motion for one meeting deferral fails.
All right, now I'll make the motion to add in the additional 3 million of, of money that's being swept from accounts to this legislation. And if we get a second for that, then we can add that in.
I'll second it.
All right. Vote in favor of that.
You're voting on the amendment right now.
Well, can you read the amendment first?
Would you like the clerk to read the amendment into the record?
Yes.
That's, do we need to have the whole amendment or just the dollar amount?
May I? If all, if, if all you're doing really is amending it so you can then lay it over, you could actually do it by caption because you already have the body that goes with the caption. Ultimately, though, you need, you get the city attorney to answer that question for you. But I don't think unless you ask for her to read it all in right now, that you have to read it all in right now. You now have two more weeks to read it.
Ed?
You can do it by caption. Unless somebody wants the entire amendment in. Because all you're doing is adding it into it and then assuming that you get the motion to defer occurs, you're not passing the final legislation and it all lays over. It, it, it gives everybody time to look at it. If in two weeks, somebody has a problem with the numbers or something in it, then you, at that point in time, it would be an amendment to withdraw whatever or strike whatever you wanted to strike.
Councilmember McKee?
Okay, so if it's not read into the agenda, how are we going to see the body of it? Is that going to be sent out? How is, how is, how are my, how are my and the public going to be able to see that, to ask questions about it?
You will get the body of it today. Um, and then the cleaned up version would end up on the agenda for the next meeting.
So they'll only have two days to review it? So that, so the public will only have two days to review it because the agenda only comes out on a Wednesday before?
No, it would come out on a Tuesday for a Thursday meeting.
Oh, right.
Okay, but if.
Which is what?
Councilmembers of year?
Well, I, I understand her question and I, and I understand the intent. But is it not possible to put up this backup material like was on this caption and take the additional one and post it on the city's website or something, just so?
Yeah, when, yeah, Ed, when you get, when you get that to them, when you get that to the council this afternoon, there's no reason why that can't be posted online.
It can be posted online, Mayor, and we can have Natalie send it to the email group that she sends out to that says the agenda has been posted.
I think. Okay, yeah. That'll satisfy, Chris, Council McKee, I think that'll satisfy the council first and also all the general public.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Nat, Natalie, um, how long is it, may I ask? The amendment, how long is it?
Okay, so it's, uh, it's about a page, it's about a page long of accounts that I would read into the record if you'd like me to read them in. I can read them in.
Yeah, why don't we just do that then? I think that would, that would help for the, for supporting the legislation for now.
And if you check your email, the council, Assistant Council Clerk Teresa has just sent it to you guys. If you'd like to look at it while the clerk reads the account numbers into the record.
Natalie, go ahead and read everything into the record.
Not a problem. Oh, are we on the amendment right now? Just to clarify, I have a motion by Councilmembers to, Brandon again, seconded by Secure for the amendment. Is that correct?
Oh, Hayes. Oh, wait.
I made the motion for the amendment unless someone else.
So I second the amendment.
Okay.
You can read in the amendment for the sake of everybody that wants to hear.
Okay, I have a motion by Secure, seconded by Brandon again, for the amendment, um, which is to amend the caption to change the amount from 2,787,295,084 That changes the total. The accounts that the monies will be coming from to change the total would be office supplies, account number 0011600-5710 in the amount of $2,000. Computer supplies, account number 001100-5790 in the amount of $2,000. Uniforms in the account of 0011900-5750 in the amount of $2,300. Office supplies, account number 0011900-5710 in the amount of $2,500. Professional services, account number 0013031-5801 in the amount of $50,000. Office supplies, account number 0013031-5710 in the amount of $5,000. Public works, legal fees, account number 0013031-5827 in the amount of $5,000. Professional services, account number 003033-5801 in the amount of $155,097. Utilities, account number 0013037-5857,600. Gas and oil, account number 0013038-5731 in the amount of $3,000. Repairs and maintenance, account number 0013038-5750 in the amount of $30,000. Advertising and publication, account number 0013039-5820 in the amount of $23,000. Repairs and maintenance, account number 0013039-5750 in the amount of $20,000. Professional services, account number 0013100-5801 in the amount of $70,000. Demolition expense, account number 0013100-5824,800. Office supplies, account number 0013100-5710 in the amount of $9,500. Department supplies, account number 0013132-5730 in the amount of $16,000. Office supplies, account number 0013132-5710 in the amount of $2,500. Professional development, account number 0013132-5890 in the amount of $2,000. Professional development, account number 0013132-5890 in the amount of $2,000. Professional development in the amount of 00, account number 0013151-5890 in the amount of $2,000. Repairs and maintenance, account number 0014058-5750 in the amount of $10,000. Repairs and maintenance, account number 0014071-5750 in the amount of $15,000. Royalties, and account number 0014071-5853 in the amount of $7,500. Miscellaneous operating supplies, account number 0015000-5739 in the amount of $8,000. Awards, account number 0015000-5732 in the amount of $6,000. Booster clubs, account number 0015000-5742 in the amount of $23,000. Professional services, account number 0015000-5801,2500. Department supplies, account number 0015056-5730 in the amount of $8,250. Chemicals, account number 0015069-5738 in the amount of $11,000. Repairs and maintenance, account number 0015069-5750 in the amount of $65,000. Rentals, account number 0015069-5870 in the amount of $3,400. Kinner Loop, and the account number 0016975-5836, amount of $250,000. Computer supplies, account number 0018082-5790 in the amount of $1,500. Department supplies, account number 0018083-5714 in the amount of $6,250. Office supplies, account number 0018085-5712 in the amount of $2,000. Professional services, account number 0018085-5805 in the amount of $150,000. Volunteer fire, account number 0018085-5879,35,000. Unemployment, account number 0018085-5887,6,000. Office supplies, account number 0018087-5710 in the amount of $2,500. Audit, account number 0018088-5811 in the amount of $25,000. Professional services, account number 0018090-5801 in the amount of $11,000. Food and refreshments, account number 0012122-5733 in the amount of $14,905,41. Retirement, account number 0012105-5611 in the amount of $15,000. Health insurance, account number 0012105-5612 in the amount of $15,000. Retirement, civil service, account number 0012116-5610 in the amount of $20,000. Salaries, account number 0012105-5601 in the amount of $30,000. Salaries, account number 0012116-5601 in the amount of $30,000. Law enforcement, liability deduction, account number 0012116-5828 in the amount of $42,000. Retirement, civil service, account number 0012118-5610 in the amount of $60,000. Gas and oil, account number 0012116-5731 in the amount of $70,000. Health insurance, account number 0012116-5612 in the amount of $75,000. Salaries, account number 0012118-5601,398,504.82. Retirement, account number 0012118-5610, amount of $113,496.77. Health insurance, account number 0012118-5612 in the amount of $5,063.70. Life insurance, account number 0012118-5613 in the amount of $43,234.10. Medicare, and from account number 0012118-5614 in the amount of $2,596.11, changing the total amount from
Councilmember Segura?
All right, well, now that we've read in the amendment, everything will still apply. The city will put this on the website. Everybody, council members now have a copy. And I just, clarification from my part and hopefully for everyone else, these are dollars that the city has recognized it will not spend to be able to make up the difference of loss of revenue coming in. We're not spending these dollars. Correct. Mike?
That's correct.
Okay, so all those dollars are not to be scared that we're going to spend. We're intending to not spend them to make up for the loss of revenue.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mike, all we doing is, all finance is doing is moving it from one spot to another spot.
Basically, correct. All we're doing is taking it from one pocket and putting it in another, in another pocket. We don't have any more money. We don't have any less money. We're just moving it.
Okay. And, and what happens if we don't need that money in that? Can it go back to where it was?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, to ask, uh, Mike Wetzel, if you can, tell me some of these funds, are they coming from the Kinner Police Department?
Yes.
And what, what, is there, that has been approved or discussed with the chief?
Yes, he's here, but yeah, we've talked.
Okay. And any of those funds coming from the council budget?
Yes.
And who, who, whose funds are the?
That is all funds that aren't expected in the council's budget.
And what, who's, who's, do they impact a particular councilman?
Everybody. Everyone, every, every single one.
It impacts, so it's, it's, it's coming out of the, the council person's district at large, their budgets.
It's coming out of your operating budget. So if you did not spend money on office supplies, we're not in the office until June 15th or whatever. I'm taking that money and putting it in another account so I can cover the shortfall. Because you're not going to use that money in 15 Gs.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's clear, that's all. And, and I, I understand the need. I just want to make sure it's clear so everybody understands. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember Hayes? You're muted.
People, all we talking about here is a lawn item transfer. If you didn't travel, your travel budget may be involved here. It doesn't, it's a, an accumulation of all the council people, districts and at large. But it's nothing more than a lawn item transfer.
Ready to vote.
Now, just for clarity, let's just clarify which y'all are voting on.
The amendment was to incorporate the additional 3 something million to the original 2.7 million request to take those dollars and slide them over to the sweep account with the intention that later it will be used to hopefully balance the budget.
Just, just so the public knows. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Hayes?
One last question, Mike. Is the sweep account, your lamp account, that's going to draw interest? No, no.
Councilmember Brandon?
Thank you. And, and just one last question, I, I, and, or comment. I understand there've been a lot of questions. I think they're going to be questions going forward. It's a lot of money, and again, this was kind of presented at the 11th hour, in my opinion. So I, I think everything we're asking and everything we're, uh, trying to scrutinize is, is worth, worth that. Thank you.
And, uh, Mike Wetzel, this doesn't have a negative impact on finance by deferring it for two, till the next meeting?
I'm not going to say that. It, it does. I mean, I need to have this done before I can do the real budget amendment, where I reduce the revenues and offset it with this account. So I will say, yes, it does affect it, um, because then they're both going to be up next time, and, and I need one to happen before.
Okay.
But.
Councilmembers here?
All right, Mike, I know it affects, does it affect any legal time constraint, or is it just time to do the work?
No, may I? I know you're talking to Mike. It's not about time to do the work. It's about the, 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 once this is done, then the next, the next amendment, it, it reflects these changes. So he cannot bring you a budget amendment reflecting changes when the funds aren't in those accounts yet. So it's just, it's a time delay and we'll work with it. It is, it is our error in not ensuring that this was to you on a timely basis. We will work with this. We will figure it out. Councilman Brandon is right. You should have seen it beforehand. I take responsibility for not ensuring that that occurred.
Okay, well, we, we, we're accepting that, but we're just still trying to get it done, but not hamper it. But if the, this comes back up in one meeting, that the same meeting he was going to put up the amendment? Well, then you can put up the amendment, and if we don't pass it, then you, I, I mean, the, the legislation to do the budget amendment. If this doesn't pass, then I don't see an issue because we're not spending these dollars. We're just reserving the dollars.
Yeah. I, we'll, we'll figure out a way. We, we'll, we'll figure out a way.
Okay.
Okay, so we are, we are voting to defer this?
No, you, you're voting to amend it, and then I'll put up a deferral.
Okay. All right, so I have a, a motion by Councilmember Brandon again, seconded by Councilmember Hayes.
No, wait. It was a motion.
Sorry. Motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Brandon again.
Right, on the amendment to add.
The amendment.
Yes.
Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0 to amend as the clerk read.
Now I'll introduce the motion for the one meeting deferral.
I think Mr. Rapier has a, has a question.
Yeah, I just want to clear up something. Uh, uh, Councilman Brandon, these amendments went to you and to, to, to Natalie, uh, yesterday in the middle of the afternoon.
Yes, and, and, uh, I talked to, uh, Mike Wetzel yesterday, and I didn't see a problem amended this, and, but I did not know that the rest of the council didn't have it, so.
Okay, okay.
It went, it went from my office, as would be an amendment, to your, to you as the council president, and to Natalie yesterday afternoon.
Okay, wait, hold on a minute.
So I should have sent it to the council.
Well, somebody should have. I'm not, I'm not saying who, but a little bit ago, I thought y'all got it right before the council meeting. And that's why we took responsibility for it.
I apologize, Mayor. That was the, that was the amendment for 15G. I apologize.
Okay, so, so, and, and I'm not, look, Natalie, you know I'm not pointing the finger at you, but the, the administration took responsibility for something I'm going to say we're not taking responsibility for now. So wait, legal department sent this. Let me get the timeline straight. And I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, but this does change which y'all are about to defer then. Though, Mike Wetzel, you sent it, you sent the amendment to the legal department Wednesday morning. I know that, or Wednesday midday. Correct?
Yes, correct.
And legal department had to make some changes, and y'all got it out yesterday afternoon, but the council just got it today or did not get it at all?
No, they got it, they got it yesterday afternoon.
Right. The council, right, the council president.
Council president, the council clerk got it yesterday.
So, and I, look, this is not the point to finger, but at the same time.
Hey.
We, I took responsibility for it. Now I'm not taking responsibility for it.
We, we understand that.
No, I know, I know, but I mean, it, it looks like legal and the administration messed up. I was under the impression that we didn't do our part, so take that into consideration with this deferral, because it's, I guess it's a little uncomfortable for the legal department and the administration at this point.
And I appreciate that. That's why we're just trying to move it forward. So if I gather motion for a deferral, waiting on a second, I think, or?
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, 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 I mean, I want to, I'd like to just.
Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you. I, I just would like the clarification of the timeframe, because we didn't, the, the, the person, the people that got it yesterday were the council clerk and the council president. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and we didn't know, the, the rest of the members, we did not know about it or receive it until it was emailed to us just during this meeting.
And that's correct too, Councilman.
And is it, do we know why we didn't get it?
That would be an oversight on the clerk's office. I apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
We have a.
Look, Nat, Natalie, I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming George. I'm just saying clarification here. Because I, I just don't want this to fall back on the legal department, that the legal department didn't do some, or the CFO didn't do something. It's just, we're all busy, we all have a lot going on. Working from home is a little bit of a difference for everybody. We're trying to get back away from that. I understand that. Natalie does a fantastic job. It's just that this is not the legal department or CFO's issue. It's just miscommunication somewhere. We understand it.
Okay, and, and when I talk to, uh, Mike Wetzel about this, it's just a sweep. So I guess I, I will take responsibility for not sending it out to the council also.
We just all have a lot going on, guys.
I appreciate that, but this is just a path to fix it, so I'll put up my motion for deferral in a second.
Second by Councilmember Carol. Natalie?
On your deferral, please vote. Motion passes seven zero for one meeting deferral. Item ten is opening of bids. We have none. Item eleven is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item twelve is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item thirteen is resolutions and motions by council members. Item thirteen A is a resolution approving amendment number two to the agreement with BLD Services LLC dated March twenty second, two thousand nineteen to provide preventative maintenance of existing sanitary and storm sewers, including service laterals at various locations in Kenner on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number eighteen dash sixty four forty six, which increases the not-to-exceed amount by a hundred thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
I just want to.
Oh, Councilmember Segura?
Yes, I, I would like to have, uh, Tom Schreiner just explain what this is.
This, this contract covers many things. It's probably when it was bid, it was well over a hundred items, but what it, what it's needed for now is to do some line, lining, uh, on, on the storm drain system is, uh, and also some various repairs on, uh, the gravity sewer lines in the city. So, so anyway, we looked, I, we thought we'd be a little bit short, and we're asking for this, uh, a hundred thousand extra, and we, we hope you consider it.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, I just have a question, um, on, so this, this contract is gonna end in, this money, these monies will be expended by the end of this year's fiscal budget, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and they'll have another contract coming before us, um, for future funding as well, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and ordinance approving an agreement with Gilcrest Construction Company LLC for utility relocation services for Lloyd Drive, I-ten interchange design build, state project number eight period zero one one six seven zero, federal aid project number eight zero one one six seven zero, and an amount not to exceed one billion two hundred dollars ninety, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty cents.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, wait. Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you. I, I was just gonna ask Mr. Schreiner to clarify this and the work being done and, and, uh, the reimbursement, please.
Work being done is to relocate a force main that's running parallel to the interstate. Uh, and, and it, we need to move the force main over because of the new interchange that's presently under construction. So it's force mains being relocated from a point west of Loyola to several hundred feet east of Loyola. So it's a hundred percent, this, uh, both the construction work and the design work will be reimbursed by DOTD a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, a year?
Oh, well, I, I was waiting for that comment, that it's state total refund, uh, funded as part of their project for the fly.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Right, okay.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B, number twelve thousand seven oh two, and ordinance the lowest response of bid received from All-Star Electric Incorporated to provide I-ten street lighting repairs and maintenance on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number nineteen dash sixty five forty three and an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the Department of Public.
I have a motion by Councilmember Carol, second by Councilmember Segura. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and three and ordinance accepting the lowest response of bid received from Compliance Environment and Viro Systems LLC to provide sanitary sewer evaluation services on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty four forty seven and an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Public Works.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan again, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember McKenney?
Um, yes, I also want to, I have a question about, hi, thank you, Council President. Um, Mr. Schreiner, I have a question, just to clarify. So the, um, in this amendment, it says it's not going to exceed, or in this, uh, legislation says exceed a hundred thousand dollars, um, and the, the bid was for two million dollars, so that's only two million dollars or a hundred thousand to that two million dollar limit, correct?
Yes, the bid did come in at, what, at the two, two million dollars, but we, we're only authorized to spend the amount shown in the legislation.
Okay, so, so we would expect this in the future to have additional amendments?
We, we may, we may, yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Motion by Councilmember Brennan again, second by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven oh four and ordinance accepting the lowest response of bid received from Ram J Construction LLC to provide drainage maintenance on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number twenty dash sixty five forty nine and an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for the Department of Public Works.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember Brennan again. I'm sorry. Y'all gotta put your hands up quicker, guys. Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. And, and again, I, I just asked that Tom Schreiner elaborate on this one?
This, this is a man, drainage maintenance contract. It's a two-year duration, and, um, what we have it for is for, uh, when we have issues with the drainage. Uh, this contractors will be authorized, we would authorize them to go out and make repairs, and, uh, with that, we'd also have to, there's a lot of surface repairs, concrete street panel replacement included, included with this work.
Is this something new, or is it something that we've already had and we're just redoing?
No, no, sir. We, we've had it for several years. Um, this one, this contract is being awarded to Ramja. They were the low bidder. Last time, we had Fleming, who also bid on it. This time, and they were in second place. So no, it's nothing new.
Okay, so the three hundred thousand, is that, wha, wha, what is that in comparison to before, do we know?
We, we set these contracts up, it's, it's different amounts that we anticipate to spend. Sometimes it'll be amended and we'll add more money if needed, but that's, that's typically what we put in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion by Councilmember Hayes, second by Councilmember Brennan again. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and five and ordinance approving an agreement with BLD Services LLC for lift station maintenance not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars annually and providing for related matters.
Do we have any discussion on this? Councilmember Wilmot?
Got a motion seconded.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to inquire, um, I, I know it's an important project, of course, uh, Tom, but if you can elaborate again, this is not to exceed seven hundred thousand annually.
Yes, that's correct.
The, the dollar amount in particular, that's what I'm, I, I wanted to inquire about. That, has that increased or decreased, or is this a new project?
Well, this, this is a new project. This is actually, this work, well, last time, last year, when Viele had the contract, they were taking care of this for us. So going forward, um, BLD will be doing this maintenance work.
Okay, this is not put out for bid, correct?
No, this, this is all maintenance work.
Okay, and this type of work, of course, is, is, is involved in a lift station, which is ultimately, we, we have to have it, I'm sure. Um, but these, this dollar amount, you feel is, is, uh, uh, within the good parameters?
Yes, yes, sir. We have, we have a lot of history that we can go look at, and, um, and, and that's, that's how we came up with this amount. We looked at past expenditures on the lift stations, and we, we derived this number.
Okay, that, that's, so you, you were a part of those talks?
Yes.
Okay, and you feel like seven hundred, but this type of work is, is well needed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan again, second by Councilmember Carol. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and six and ordinance ratifying the Blue Cross Blue Sheep of Louisiana Policy and Rates for Health Insurance Coverage for the Kenner Employees, Retirees, Dependents for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, as set forth in their proposals.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Hayes. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number twelve thousand seven hundred and seven and ordinance ratifying the policy and rates for commercial property insurance for the City of Kenner for the policy year June first, two thousand twenty through May thirty first, two thousand twenty-one.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Segura. Councilmembers, please vote.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we have received a request to amend the legislation to reflect the carrier as AMRISK. If I could get a motion in a second to amend the legislation.
I'll motion.
Second. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan again, seconded by Councilmember Segura to amend the legislation to reflect AMRISK as the carrier. Please vote on your amendment.
I, I have a question.
Okay. Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, my question is, is, um, when, I, I guess I want to explain why we're just getting an amendment to, and the original legislation didn't have the carrier listed. Please.
You're getting it, uh, the original, uh, legislation didn't have the, the carrier in it because the outside, uh, insurance broker was still shopping the rate. And we, we didn't get a fine, we, we had a recommendation for AMRISK, but we're waiting to see if any other rates came in lower. And as, since we're now at the wall, uh, because our policy expires on June first, uh, we're inserting AMRISK now.
And that was the lowest bid, or that was the lowest proposal?
That is the only one that has given us a proposal.
Okay.
All the other, all the others have, have come in either refusing to bid or, or, uh, refusing, no bids.
And when was that proposal received?
Which one?
The, the only one that we received. When was it received?
Uh, we got it uh, May fifth.
Okay, so, and you have it, so you hadn't received, you got it on May fifth, and you hadn't received anything, um, since then, but we, we just got it. We, I, I just got it today, or we just shared it today, correct?
That's correct, because we were still shopping other, other policies.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. They had, the, the, property casualty company, when they're shopping these things, it, uh, could go to the last day of the month. I've seen that happen before.
I've, I've seen it go to the day before a policy expires.
That's, you are correct.
And I apologize for it, but this is, that's the insurance, i- it is unfortunately the way casualty insurance works.
Yes, it is. Anyone else?
I think Councilman Brennan said that in the agenda meeting, being in that industry, didn't you, Councilman Brennan?
Yes, I did. Okay, I have anyone else? Uh, I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Segura. Councilmembers, please vote.
On the amendment, motion passes seven zero. Original motion as amended now, please vote.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, second by Councilmember Segura. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Excuse me.
Thank you, Tom.
Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and proven amendment number two to the fiscal year two thousand nineteen annual action plan for the proposed Community Development Block Grant Bears Act, CDVG dash CV funds, and the amount of two hundred and eighty seven thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars for the Community Development Department. Item sixteen B is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty annual action plan for the proposed Community Development Block Grant and the amount of four hundred and eighty eight thousand two hundred and one dollars for the proposed Home Investment Partnership Grant and the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars for the Community Development Department. Item sixteen C is an ordinance ratifying the prudential policies and rates for life insurance coverage for the City of Kenner employees from July first, two thousand twenty through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, as set forth in their proposal. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilmembers, a year?
Thank you, Council President. Um, as you can see from my, my background, uh, this is to pay tribute to the veterans this Memorial Day weekend. Uh, unfortunately, today, uh, in, in history, we would have had our Memorial Day ceremony, but with the COVID not allowing us to meet and carry on those types of. but with the COVID not allowing us to meet and carry on those types of events, we had to forego that. But I still wanted to make the acknowledgement to all of our veterans and, and service members that this week, this Memorial Day, Monday and the weekend coming up is still not forgotten. It is still remembered what they have done for us and want to thank them. And certainly, the, the ones who gave their ultimate sacrifice to keep this country safe, want to remember that. As today, or this weekend and then definitely today, and keep everybody, let everybody understand that we are slowly coming out of this stay-at-home order, and even though this is a weekend that, you know, you might want to do a lot of things, please keep in mind that we're not clear of this virus. And please, please use the requirements of, that have been put out there, whether it's wearing a mask, washing your hands frequently, keeping you, your distance and keeping your crowds down. We do not want to go back into a stay-at-home predicament, so let's keep that in mind as we celebrate this weekend, thank you.
Council member Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to echo Councilman Segura's remark about Memorial Day to, to thank, to keeping our prayers, all of our soldiers that have given their lives, men and women, for our freedom and for freedom around the world, also for people who may not have ever gone to Veteran Park, Veterans Park. There are individuals, obviously from the City of Kenner, that are also rec, that we recognize by name. So if you get an opportunity between now and Monday, go out there and, and look at the names, you know, recognize that, give them some, some appreciation for the men and women from the City of Kenner that have, have given their lives. Also, I would like to thank the administration, CRC, and all the support organizations, the Lincoln Manor Civic Organization, the Veteran Heights Civic Organization, General Services Recreation, the Police Department, for their support over the last week for the food and masks giveaway at the Lincoln Manor Playground and at the Susan Park Gym. Both days were, we had good weather, blessed with good weather, good support from those administrations that I mentioned, and for the people. It was orderly and it was done in a timely manner, and I think people really appreciate that. And I just, I, I believe that we as the City of Kenner has done, have done a lot to support everyone during this time. We are not able to do everything, but we have done some good things and we should be, should be glad of that, that we are, we have the empathy, the sympathy, and the, the acknowledgement of people going through some tough times, and when we can help, we, we help, and we will continue to help as best that we can. So, thank everybody again for their, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll, Mayor Zahn?
And I'd just like to say a little bit of what Councilman Segura was saying about the not being a Heaven Memorial Day service. That's something I forgot to talk about in my comments. We actually taped a virtual one yesterday, I guess you would, like a PSA. Myself, Councilman Segura, Councilman Hayes, Councilman Carroll, the Fire Chief and Lieutenant De Forges at the Kenner Police Department were present. And we just, we just asked to, you know, to remember all those that have given the ultimate sacrifice on Monday for Memorial Day. We apologize that we had to do it that way, we couldn't have a speaker, we did the best that we could. We actually visited also by a Jefferson Parish School Board Member for that area where we were by the Kenner Police Department, Simeon Dickinson. So we all got to say a few words. That will start airing sometime today, I believe, over the weekend and also on Memorial Day. So just be looking for that, because that is something that we need to, actually, they're telling me it's on the YouTube channel right now. So we'll start getting that on all the other social media, too. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mayor, council member McKenney?
Thank you, Council President. I, I too want to thank all of those who have give, sacrificed for us and allowed us to have our freedom. I appreciate them giving them themselves. But I also want to just remember that this is graduation season as well. Lots of high school seniors have been graduating, would have, would have graduated in this week or next week. They will be graduating in the weeks to come, but not in the same way. So I just want to remember those graduating seniors from Kenner Discovery, Bonneville, Rommel, Chappelle, all of those. You know, we, we understand, we're, we want to celebrate your accomplishments, we're proud of you, and we want to see great things from you in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenney. I would like to just thank our insurance broker on the health insurance for the City of Kenner, because I would like for people to understand that in the last two years, the job that's been done has saved the City of Kenner a ton of money, which saves our taxpayers' money, that's the bottom line. But I'd like to thank Nick Impasato for doing what he has done for our health insurance plan. Council clerk?
Yes, item eighteen is new business, we have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business and the motions to reconsider or remove from a tabled position, we have none. Item twenty is questions wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Campo, do we have anybody in queue?
Nobody queued up yet. Give them a minute, maybe they're just raising their hands. I know Al Morello wants to speak. Greg Teft has his hand up.
Yeah, let's go ahead, Adam.
Mr. Teft?
He's still muted.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, this is Greg Teft, at thirty-seven twenty West Loyola Drive, Kenner. I know I forgot to do that at the last council meeting, I apologize. I want to just take the opportunity to really thank Chad Petfield, the contractors, city employees, and the volunteers and citizens that cleaned up our city by picking up all these old trash bins. And I think it's remarkable that we actually had citizens that volunteered because they think that much of the city and would not allow a company to drag us down and make us look bad. And I appreciate that. The other thing I want to bring out, and I, I brought this up before, because I heard, and it may not be true, but I heard that a lot of the cans that were picked up were real old and some of them were not even really usable. And that brings to mind, because here we had a contract, a contractor, that there was no oversight to make sure that they were doing the job that they had agreed to do. And what I'm asking of the administration and council is that we figure out how to set up oversight so that any vendor that does work at Kenner, that there is somebody as a watchdog to make sure they're living up to the agreement and doing what they are required to do. And again, I also want to thank the mayor of the administration and the council members. What you have done at the Food Lab has been phenomenal, and it, and that is also appreciated because our citizens have been put through a lot, and our seniors are really have been put through a lot. Because if you go at the grocery store and look at pricing, it is out of sight. And I think what the city and the volunteers that have looked on that, I commend all of you for that. And I, and I as a citizen, and proud that I am a citizen of Kenner because, and that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Uh, Adam?
Richard Brown has his hand up.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, now I think I'm unmuted. I suddenly lost the connection on my laptop and had to switch to my cell phone. I wanted to, to speak about the, the IV waste contract that's to be considered at the next council meeting. And wanted to urge the council to do two or three things. And number one is to put in a definite starting price in the contract. Right now, it's got some formula for arriving at a price. We've been told repeatedly that the cost to use IV waste will be the same as what we're paying Romelli. That cost is eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents per month, per service unit. Please put that price in this contract, let's don't play games with it. It's eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents per month, per service unit, let's put the price in there. The next point is that there are apparently already some problems with the IV waste cans being damaged, with wheels coming off. I've read of several incidents of that, and it happened to my own can the very first time my wife took it out on Monday to put it out, a wheel came off. The IV waste contract does not specifically require IV waste to replace damaged cans. The old Romelli contract does specifically require him to replace all broken and damaged cans at his cost. Let's please put that paragraph in this new contract, let's make it clear and unambiguous. There is a provision about the cans needing a ten-year warranty, but let's insert a specific provision that broken and damaged can shall be repaired or replaced at no cost to the citizen. And then I've got a question, this is for the administration or for legal. I understand that the mayor has entered into an emergency contract with IV waste for them to pick up in the interim because the judge in the twenty-fourth District Court ruled the previous contract null and void because it was improperly adopted. What are the terms of this new contract? What's the price? I mean, I'm not talking to the emergency contract, what's the price? What's the length of it? How long? Is it more than a hundred thousand dollars? And if it is, what's the authority for entering into one over a hundred thousand dollars? The way I calculate, it can't be any longer than about seven days or ten days without exceeding that limit. And again, the judge has already ruled one temporary contract illegal. And I would appreciate the details on that emergency contract and how I can get a copy of it.
Hey, Mr. Brown, your time is up. Is any, Councilman Carroll?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Brown, I'd like to thank you for your, for your question. I too would like to, to know the terms of that contract, how many, how much it is, because I'm, I'm aware of it now, find out about it. But I'd like to know, you know, how much are we paying, what are the terms, and what's the lift?
Do we have any comments on that?
I don't know if legal wants to bail on that, because it's part of the litigation, I would, I would assume, huh, legal? Litigation led to the emergency contract.
It, it's, it certainly is part of the, the emergency contract, but I can tell you that Mr., that IV waste is picking it up for the eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents per can. It is entered into under the emergency powers that the mayor has as a result of the pandemic, which allows him to enter into any emergency contract he sees, he sees necessary in order to deal with the pandemic.
And, attorney, how long is the length of this contract?
Uh, it is thirty days or until you, until the council passes a, a final contract, whichever occurs first.
And the, so the thirty days, is there a set dollar amount for, for this contract?
It's eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents per service unit per month.
Time twenty-two thousand.
Yes.
And that is, help me with my math.
Uh, I, I don't do math well either, Councilman.
Well, I want, if, if the finance director can help me with that, I would appreciate it.
It, if you, but it's, it's not assuming that you all pass something on the fourth, you're not talking about a full thirty days.
Right, okay, so it's kind of like prorated for, depending on that date, time, the twenty-two thousand, times.
I mean, at this point, it would run at least until June the fifth, the council means on June the fourth, correct?
That's correct.
So that is, okay, seven, ten days, or whatever time, twenty, so I would, yeah, okay, I just want to get a, I just want to hear that number. If the finance director can multiply the eleven twenty-eight times twenty-two thousand for seven days.
Seven days?
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Two forty-eight, one sixty. Is the monthly total.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, uh, my comment just is, is real brief. I'd like to ask Mr. Brown how he gets his wife to take his, hook, their garbage can out, and I'd like to know if he could maybe let me know so I can just pass that along to my significant other.
Councilmember Brennan, you'll be in the can if that happens. Any other comments?
Uh, Sally Molina has her hand up.
Okay.
Sally, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Adam, um, Sally Molina, District Five. I also want to echo the questions of Mr. Richard Brown and Councilman Gregory Carroll. And I have a question for the emergency contract, oh, we entered into the emergency contract with IV waste, it's my understanding that IV waste is in litigation with Romelli as well. And my question is, why not go with an independent company like Waste Pro that would, um, not be in, you know, not be included in the temporary restraining orders and different things that are binding IV waste and Romelli, both of them in litigation with the City of Kenner?
Oh, you finished, Stacy?
Sally.
Sally, I'm sorry.
Sally Molina, Districts Five.
Okay.
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay. Any answers to that question?
The, the IV cans on the street? I don't, I don't think we want to get into the battle of the garbage cans.
Okay. Adam Campo?
Councilman Wilmot has his hand raised.
Okay, council member Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for our city attorney, Mr. Raffier. As far as, and, and I don't know if you feel free to answer or not answer, whatever you deem appropriate. As far as the, the litigation, I'm sorry, as far as the legislation for our next council meeting regarding the IV contract, the, the dollar amount, can the dollar amount be reflected in there, or is there a problem putting the dollar amount in there?
The doll, the, the, what is put in there is a formula based on the, as the administration and the city attorney's office has always said, IV waste was agreed to do it for the value of the Romelli contract. That formula makes it the value of the Romelli contract.
So, so, but it, it, it's got a formula that tags on additional things, does it not?
It, no, it's the formula that uses the CPI adjustment as provided for in the original Romelli contract.
Okay, so it doesn't, it specifically provide a dollar figure, but it can be calculated?
Yes, it, yes, it has the ability to be calculated.
Okay, and does it have the ability to be calculated for the next council meeting?
It requires the use of the June CPI, that number probably won't be out until July.
Okay, okay, all right, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and attorney, thank you for your, your response on that. But I think it is important for us to, like, we've had on every contract since I've been on the council, to be able to have an established number for, for household, per twenty-two thousand, because, like I said earlier, I don't do good math, I'm not able to sometimes calculate that. And some people just want to make sure that that eleven twenty-eight is the number that we are dealing with just per household. So it is important to me that that number is in there when we come back to, to vote on this contract, that eleven twenty-eight. Besides the CPI or whatever else, uh, uh, number we get to, that number is important to be in there. Thank you, Mr. President.
I understand, Councilman.
Okay, Adam, uh, we have, I, I see Al Morello's. Okay, Adam, we have, I, I see Al Morello's. Well, is this the, him talking or the recording or what's the deal?
So Mr. Morello asked us to record his comments for the meeting and we have them recorded and we can play them now if the council wishes.
Go ahead.
There'll be about a five second delay.
Forty two sixty East Loyola Drive, forty eight years. I want to respond to an article in the Advocate today concerning the solid waste contract. And I want to direct this first. First of all, let me just say, there's a right way of doing business and then there's this way. And this is why the people are put squarely in the middle. Now, I want to direct this to Bob Romelli. You should have assured the people, Bob Romelli of Kenner, that you would collect their solid waste despite the issues between you and City Hall. But instead, you directed your predicament to the citizens of Kenner and turned your back on us, which is totally unacceptable. I want to direct this to you, Sidney Torres the fourth. You stated at the March fifth meeting that Nikki Nicolosi was not on your payroll. He did not work for you. While being a businessman that you are, I'm sure you heard of a lobbyist. Lobbyists don't have to be on the payroll, Sidney Torres. They get rewarded down the road for doing what they do. Now, I want to direct this to the mayor. Earlier in your presentation, you talked about how our sales taxes are down because of our businesses being shut down because of this COVID nineteen business, okay? Now watch, Mayor Zahn, did you address the people of Kenner and tell us how many of those as of today? Seven thousand one hundred and seventy five positive cases in Gibson County. But you never addressed the citizens of Kenner. You never told us how many of those cases was in the city of Kenner. And I'd like you to gather the data and I'd like you to hold a press conference and tell the people of Kenner how many of those cases are in our city. Now, Mayor Commodore Grand Isle has zero cases down there. He did not wait for the governor to give him any okays through no press conferences. He did not wait on Parish President Lee Shane. Mayor Commodore opened up Grand Isle weeks ago, long before anybody turned anything to him. And I commend him for doing that. That's the model that all the other municipalities, five of them, should follow. Now, I'm taking this, so now you are not going to get a chance to respond to my comments right now, but you know, the next meeting you will have a chance. And I invite anybody that's got any comments for me or any questions to add them at the next council meeting. That's all I have. Thank you very much. God bless everybody and y'all stay safe, you and your families. Thank you.
Okay, Adam?
There are no other public hands raised. I see Councilman Carroll has his hand up there.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I look forward to addressing Mr. Morello at the next meeting, particularly his, his comments to the mayor about why did the mayor not go against what the governor was saying. You know, we just can't take it upon ourselves to, to, to do what we want to do as a city. I commend the mayor to be in, in, in line with the governor. He did the right thing. So to, just because someone else did something, and I'm not trying to speak for the city of Grand Isle, the mayor, in my opinion, did the right thing. And we are better because of that. So I look forward to having this conversation with Mr. Morello at the, the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor Zahn?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, Councilman Carroll. And it, it's hard when it's a recording because you can't really come back and dig more into the question, but I do appreciate that support. And, and look, and I think you agree, along with the rest of the council, we work as a region. We work with Justin Parish, we work with the state. We make, we, we want to work with everyone together. It's not them making me do anything or any, anybody going against the governor. Look, the governor's doing a good job. We've all said that, well, most of us have said that in the past. I think the governor handled this appropriately. You can look to the President of the United States, how he has handled it. I think it's been appropriate the way he's handled it for the nation, the governor for the state, Parish President Lee Shane for the parish, and then the, the mayors of their own cities, along with the councils. And if you compare Grand Isle's population, which I would think it's, if it's three thousand people, that's probably giving them a lot. As far as not even that. If you compare Grand Isle's population to this close to seventy thousand residents we have in the city of Kenner, we have a lot more of a risk. We have a lot more here. So, and no, no, you know, no insult to Mayor Commodore, but he's running a whole different type of city population, whole different setup. Their economy is totally different. And he does a great job doing that. But it's a little bit easier when you have a smaller population to maybe open up quicker and move ahead. How many businesses are in Grand Isle compared to the businesses in the city of Kenner? It's, it's a lot. It would be a lot. And we can get those numbers to compare that. Someone just texted me the population of Grand Isle. It's not even fifteen hundred. So I was really being over generous when I said three thousand. But under fifteen hundred people compared to close to seventy thousand residents here in the city of Kenner. Yeah, we, we've got to be a little more in sync with the parish, the state and the country. So, Councilman Carroll, I appreciate the support. And I appreciate the support of all the council members because I don't, none of you all asked anything different than what I did or what Parish President Lee Shane did. And that'll be something I look forward to informing Mr. Morello on because, look, it's just the lack of knowledge of, of how different areas and different cities municipalities lay out. So thank you, Councilman Carroll.
Okay, does anyone else have anything to say? Council Clerk? Adam, we don't have anybody else, right?
No other hands up, Councilman.
All right, Council Clerk?
If I can get a person in a second to adjourn?
Motion.
Got it. Adjourned.